I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and consider our motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Schmidt, second by Aaron's. Franny, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Consider our motion to approve our consent agenda. Thank you. Franny, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Let me move on to our opportunity for public comment. If there's anybody here with us in the audience or on the phone that wants to come up and address the board, now would be the time to do so. All right. I'm not sure. Why don't you come up and tell us why you're here?
All right. Apologize. So I had been here last year. I have a business in Harrisburg in the La Valley District, and there's just a property that's been disheveled for years, and we've attempted to come many times. And this year, we were told that January 1st would be the absolute last time that they would continue to be issued a building permit. So January 1st came around. Nothing has changed. I've sent in pictures showing the condition of the lot as it is today. It's even worse than the last time I was here. And in addition, they were also given another building permit, so now it's pushed out to this summer. So I'm just trying to get a resolution to this, find out why that continues to be issued, and how we change course.
Thank you.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I invited the Speaker to come today to speak to us.
Sure.
She wanted to be heard, and I told her to come during the public input, and we decided whether to put it on the agenda in the future here after consulting with Toby and the State's Attorney's Office about what to do out there.
All right. Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our Commissioner reports. Any Commissioners have reports they'd like to make today? I did go last week on May 4th. There was a public information meeting for the Northern Lincoln County Corridor Study that's being done. They're just kind of into the beginning of that midway. But the South Dakota DOT is studying South Dakota Highway 11 and 115 in Northern Lincoln County to look at identifying existing and future infrastructure needs on those roads. There will be some additional public meetings later this fall. I think the report's supposed to be finalized in early next year. The study, what they're looking at, and they're trying to accommodate the growth in Lincoln County and identify needs for traffic signals and other precautions along those corridors, including turning lanes. So there will be additional meetings. They are asking that public comments be turned in by May 25th of this year. There is a website that you can go to. It is www.sd11-sd115.com. So anybody that wants to have any input into that, go ahead and check out the website, and I think you can make your comments right there on that website. Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we'll move on to regular business. First thing on our agenda is a public hearing for a resolution of Lincoln County, South Dakota, approving the preliminary subdivision plan of Prairie Acres addition, the location and parcel ID 100 dot 50 dot 73 dot 2000. The planning commission recommended approval 6-0. Toby, what are you, are you going to handle this?
Yep, good morning.
Thank you.
So the applicant owner is 272nd Street LLC. Property is approximately one and a half miles to the west of the city of T. Subject property is approximately 115.77 acres. The property was rezoned from A1 agricultural to RR rural residential in 2014 by the Board of Commissioners. At that time, there was a preliminary plan application that was submitted in conjunction with that application. That preliminary plan, Stone Lake Edition, called for 82 rural residential lots on the subject property. Subject property has been sold. The new owners have submitted a revised, or essentially a new preliminary plan, subdivision plan. The preliminary subdivision plan calls for 63 lot rural residential subdivision. As you can see, and if you've reviewed this prior to the meeting, that this is much greater than a preliminary subdivision plan submittal. The planning commission did approve the applicant, or did recommend approval of the application in November of last year. Since that time, staff and myself and the engineers have worked with the owners and the applicants to resolve some concerns and issues that exist in the application. Access has been resolved, and that was coordination with the highway superintendent, trying to coordinate it with addition with the lots or the ownership to the, to the west. As well as you're aware, you've approved a development to the west of this development, a residential development. And so there, there's going to be a connecting point to that development from this development, as well as this submittal has been reviewed by our drainage engineer, fully through. So typically, when you approve a preliminary plan, it's just preliminary grading and drainage. The applicant and their consultants have submitted us a full drainage plan. And so at this time, I would say the staff recommends approval of this application. Again, the property has been rezoned. This is the initial steps to subdivide the property for rural residential development. With that, do you have to answer any questions that you have for staff at this time?
Anybody have questions for staff?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And this is a public hearing. Is the applicant present? You want to come on up, sir? And start by saying your name and address?
I'm Jason Walsh, 2407 East Meadows Side, please.
And you want to just kind of tell us what the plan is?
Well, the plan, excuse me, is just as Toby referenced, to put a small development out on the west side of T with a little small pond in the middle. We worked with the neighbor to the south, did some work on his property so that any overflow from ours would flow into the natural drainage of his. And as part of that, since they had to take down the fence, we agreed to put them in a new fence. We've had some neighbors to the west, one that did not like that where we were piling dirt was blocking our view of the sunset, so we took it upon ourselves to move that to a different area. I think, as Toby alluded to, we've agreed all along to every request that's ever been made of us, including the different access points and accommodating our neighbor to the west. You know, I'll answer your questions if you have them.
Sure. Any Commissioners have questions for Mr. Walsh?
This is 115 acres?
You're correct.
And is it, then is this going to be a rural residential?
Correct. Each lot's, you know, met all the requirements over an acre. Normal utilities except for septic, which is, but they're, they're big, they're, you know, we're not trying to be a city. We're not going to put curb and gutter. It's, if you're, I modeled it, if you're familiar with going into Baker Crossing, that kind of look and feel.
I've been by there. All your preliminary work is done, your scraping and your, your so on and so forth.
Correct.
What will be your next objective this year then, yep?
We were going to put in all the infrastructure, all the roads and everything, and hope to be selling lots by July.
Can I ask you, what is, what are the price of your homes? Are you, are these starter homes, or are these more exclusive?
No, this is, because, you know, with the pond and the stuff, there will be an HOA, you know, we're going to put wells in to maintain the water level to the, to the level so that people can enjoy and use that as a, you know, it's deep enough that we can put fish in it, that they can stock it with that. People could ice skate in the winter, so it's, it has a park that we're building in. There's other amenities in there. So I would say the, you know, along the road, 272nd Street, those are going to be probably the cheapest style, you know, in the 400 range. But the bigger lots on the, on the pond, we anticipate to be, you know, million dollar homes.
And you've worked out all drainage issues with your neighbors and farmers and so forth?
Correct, correct, yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? If not, since this is a public hearing, anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the resolution, want to come on up? Anybody here to speak against it? If not, I consider a motion.
Move to approve the application, Madam Chair.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, Franny, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to our first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County. Franny, do you want to go ahead and read that one?
The first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, South Dakota, rezoning property legally described as N 1/2 Northeast 1/4, Section 27 T 100N R 49W Springdale Township, from the A1 Agricultural District to the RR Rural Residential District, and amending the official zoning map of Lincoln County. The planning commission vote to recommend approval failed 0 to 7.
Thank you. We'll move on to our next item.
The first reading for an ordinance of Lincoln County, amending the joint zoning regulations for Lincoln County and the city of Sioux Falls by amending Article 9.000 C Commercial District, Section 9.02J Medical Cannabis Establishment. The Lincoln County Planning Commission vote to recommend approval failed 0 to 5. The Sioux Falls Planning Commission vote recommended approval failed 0 to 5.
Thank you. We'll move on to item four on our agenda. Board action, we talked about this last time regarding options for parcel 100.49.36.3000. If you look in your briefing packet, what, when we voted last time, we had thought that the property had been surplus, when in fact it had not. So we need to kind of go back and readdress that and look at declaring the property as surplus and removing it from the inventory. Parcel described 100.49.36.3000. It's legally described as government lot 136-100-49. And then as part of that, I'd like to, the motion to include authorizing the auditor to advertise for sealed bids, which would be due June 3rd at 10:00 a.m. to be opened at 10:05 a.m. and awarded on June 9th, 2022 for the parcel. And then we need to appoint three taxpayers to serve as appraisers, with the appraisal due by May 30th of 2022. So if, if you're looking at your briefing packet, that may help to, help you formulate your motion. So I would ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we surplus the county property, parcel 100-49-36-3000.
Thank you. And then does that motion include authorizing the auditor to advertise for sealed bids?
It does.
And then, okay. And then we'll, we'll handle those two, and then we'll look at appointing the taxpayers to serve as appraisers. So if that's your motion, Commissioner Aaron's, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Franny, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Then we need to appoint three taxpayers to serve as appraisers. Appraisals due by May 30th. Any thoughts on who would be good to do that?
I'll serve on it.
All right. Got it, Commissioner Aaron's. Any other Commissioners want to serve on that?
Madam Chair, I'll offer my services.
Okay. And then I just need one other person to do that. Any ideas?
Do you have any volunteers out there?
Yep. Paul Paulson, you look really energized to volunteer for this.
Thank you, Paul.
Do you want to, do you want to be one of the taxpayers to appraise this property with Commissioner Poppins and Commissioner Aaron's? You just go out with them and put a, put a number on the property.
Paul, I'll swing past your house and drive you down there.
All right, so we have three. So Commissioner Poppins, Commissioner Aaron's, and Mr. Paul Paulson.
He lives just up the street from me.
All right. So can I get a motion to appoint those three taxpayers to serve as appraisers?
Don't move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Franny, you call the roll.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. And then we are to have a discussion in board action regarding agreement for pretrial services. Well, I don't know. Joe, were you going to handle that, or? We have an agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for payment of expenses for pretrial services. Do you want to just kind of run down the nuts and bolts of that?
Sure. My understanding, and when reading the briefing, is that this is simply just a renewal of that contract in preparation for our budget proposal. And for those who don't know, the pretrial services offers a way to get people prepared for their sentencing on felony matters and various other appearances before the court. And I think the important thing that is noted in your packet is that that does alleviate costs to the county and that it does prepare those defendants to be sentenced, and that they don't need to sit while incarcerated waiting for that sentence, so.
Joe, does this also handle the PSAs that deal with bales and bond?
I believe so, yes.
So this is a two-year contract?
I do not know the answer to that.
It is.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Yep, it's twenty-three, twenty-four. Commences January 1st of 2023 and continues through December 31st of 2024. And we are paying $17,500 to be invoiced to Lincoln County and paid in one lump sum to Minnehaha County on or before the first day of January 2023 for the first year of service. And then another payment, January 24th, for the second year of service.
For the same amount then, correct? Madam Chair?
That is how I am reading it, yes.
Madam Chair, I think the bigger discussion, if it needs to happen, it would be the fact that this was established under funding created by a grant. That grant funding is gone. This will be a direct cost to the taxpayers now moving forward. Joe, this is kind of a question then for the office. Has it been in the expectations, has it met expectations, or the office exceeded expectations or failed some of the expectations?
You know, Commissioner, I guess I haven't worked that many criminal cases in our office, but I do know in my previous position in Minnehaha, at least, that that is a huge service to the office and to the court system as well.
So well worth the money that's, is expended?
I would say so, yes.
The pretrial services do include the PSA, which is a Public Safety Assessment, includes informational packets to the judiciary for use at first appearance or arraignment, access to integrated software, the comprehensive data reports, facial recognition through the SCRAM app, which is a alcohol monitoring tool that is used by the counties. There's a precision kiosk, Minnehaha County website messaging, jail ATM messaging, call, text, email, and in-person options, court reminder program, and pretrial monitoring. Are all the services that are provided.
Was this originally funded by a grant from the MacArthur Foundation?
That's my understanding based on this briefing here, yes.
And so they wanted to pay for it for the first year, and then we had to adopt their processes and system thereafter and pay for it, right?
I'm unaware of that answer, Commissioner.
I believe it was actually a three-year grant. I definitely could be wrong, but I believe it was a three-year grant, and that funding is now up, so. Madam Chair, I would move to execute the agreement.
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll move on to item six on our agenda. I think Commissioner Schmidt, you were going to tee that up?
Madam Chair, for the record, I will step down for the discussion, as the parties are asking for permission to access across one of my family's farmland, and I think it's inappropriate for me to sit on this board, or discuss on this board, those actions, so.
All right, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, many of you, I think on this commission, what we've asked for is we've had two more or less public hearings, hearing from the public on their concerns concerning this carbon pipeline that is proposed to go across our county. So I thought it would be a good idea if we, as Commissioners, just sat and talked amongst ourselves about this issue, because certainly we have received a lot of emails. I counted about a dozen so far of people that have expressed their deep concerns about the safety and what it means to their property, or something like that. So I thought we should just sit and talk about it. I had some interesting information that you have had, and just for, to recap that, we have had, I think, the ordinance that was passed by Brown County that talked about a 15-foot, 1,500-foot setback, about the depth of the pipeline, and several other things. But I found an interesting article, which talked about this particular pipeline, and it was dubbed the Midwest Carbon Express. And it delved into not necessarily the safety portion of this, but just for clarity, the tax credits that are going to be accessed by this came back from, it's called, Congress created a provision called 45Q, which delivered a tax credit for every metric ton of carbon that was emitted and managed and sequestered. And that the pipeline is not alone in its uniqueness, because there are several of those that have been proposed across our country. There is a 1,300-mile pipeline, which is called the Heartland Express, which is up in a different area, like in, where they grow a lot of corn, where ethanol is, and there's a Archer Daniels Midland that has one. So, I mean, this is not a unique situation that confronts us. I mean, it is across the country. But there is a lot of questions on that, and I would like to vet from one thing, what kind of situation, and I'll ask our two attorneys on our board, because somehow this deals with intrastate or interstate commerce. And if it does with intra, of course, the state can handle that, but if it's inter, then it's a federal situation. And just what does the county say have? Because we would, whatever action we take, whether it's a letter, a moratorium, or we do nothing, goes to the PUC. So what is the impetus of a county's ability to affect the, this pipeline? And I'd ask for comments from my other Commissioners.
Well, as you stated, you know, and I wasn't planning on giving any comments about it, but really, the county's hands are, I don't want to say tied. I mean, we can certainly send a message on what, you know, our overall feelings are about the project, and we have applied for party status, and I think that is the only way that we can really do anything about this, is if we were to intervene as a party. And so I know those can, those, those discussions are going to continue, but I think that's where it stands right now, us as a board in and of ourselves. I don't think that we have a lot of power or control over the situation, other than to send that message on, you know, if we're going to take a stand for or against the project.
Yep.
Commissioner Aaron's, maybe you disagree, but.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think county commissions always have the authority to issue resolutions and express their opinions as a board on the pipeline. We've been asked to do that on other issues at the, all the way from the local, state, and national level. And that's always within our ability to act. Now, in this instance, I think the relief that some people are asking for is for the county commission to approve a moratorium. And essentially, what that means is that the, this county could hold up construction of the pipeline in, in this county. And then I think another request from the opponents of the pipeline, and I think they've got some good concerns here, is with regard to the depth of the pipeline, and they've also asked for some setbacks to be put in place as well. Well, with regard to the depth of the pipeline, as valid as the concerns are of the opponents or the landowners, we were presented with a federal court case out of Minnesota that said county commissions have no authority to act to do that. And so if we did do that, if we did pass a law in contravention of federal law, we're just asking for a lawsuit. We're going to get sued, and we're going to lose, because in that court case, it was very clear, and it was issued in the same Eighth Circuit Court of Appeals that the state of South Dakota, just so people know, South Dakota and Minnesota are in the same federal Circuit Court of Appeals, and, and I don't recall seeing the appeal on that case, but it just flat out said county commissions are not allowed to dictate to interstate pipelines how to build their pipeline. And, you know, people are already irritated about the fact that government does things that are outside the bounds of the law, and now people are asking for this county commission to do things that are outside the bounds of the law. And so it's up to the people who sit up here at this dais to rein in county government and not to be acting outside the boundaries of the law. Now, that's with regard to moratoriums and setbacks and depth levels. Now, can this county commission speak to our PUC and send a message on these issues? Yes, it can. And that's fully within our power and authority to act, and, and so we can do that. But this county commission, we can't have 64 different rules with regard to pipelines in South Dakota, just like we can't have 64 different sets of rules with election law or with any other type of law. County commissions just can't do that, otherwise we, you know, we have to follow state law, and we also have to follow federal law. So, because today it's a pipeline, but what is it tomorrow? And then what is it next year? Every time there's an issue that comes up that somebody doesn't like, they're going to want the county commission to act. And in this instance, the best advice that we can follow is to follow the law. And here, we have a very clear court case from a federal judge telling us what we can and cannot do, and it's from our neighbors to the, to the east. So Commissioner Schmidt, in answer to your question, that's what I believe the law is, and that's what I believe the boundaries of our authority are.
I have, just helped me understand, so that I think there are 21 counties in Iowa and several in the state that have already passed a moratorium. So not being argumentative, so. So, not being argumentative, so what you're saying is that they are making themselves liable for court action against that particular ordinance or thing they passed?
Well, I am a member of the bar in Iowa, but I have not looked at the issue of whether or not county commissions in, in the state of Iowa, what specifically they are trying to do over there. I can only speak with some authority with regard to here in South Dakota, as well as how that federal court case applies to county commissions here in South Dakota. But I will say this, just because government does something doesn't mean it's legal.
Oh, okay. I'm just trying to vet this out. So Brown County did pass an ordinance, I think you all got a copy of that, in which they specifically spelled out what you just talked about was the depth of a pipeline and whether it's from seven feet or it's fifty, the setbacks to fifteen-hundred feet. So, you know, I was always under the understanding that the ultimate authority for this pipeline would be the Public Utilities Commission of our state. Is that not correct?
Yeah, they're the sole authority or the, or the legislature in conjunction with the governor.
That is correct. And Commissioner Schmidt, an ordinance, while we might pass an ordinance, that is what I would call the message. Whether or not that ordinance is enforceable, I highly doubt. And I, I concur with Commissioner Aaronz's comments about that.
Madam Chair, you made mention something about party status.
Correct.
Yes. Can you, can you elaborate just a little bit more in that, in case there's some people here that don't understand that?
Well, there was a deadline to, for the county to fill out the paperwork, to apply for party status if there was going to be a lawsuit, and we were looking to intervene in something that the PUC may or may not do. And we did apply for that party status, but no decisions have made to date whether or not we would actually intervene.
And that was filed where then? With the PUC?
Uh, correct.
Correct.
And Commissioner Schmidt, I don't think you're being argumentative. I think having a debate and a discussion about these things is very important. And I do think that challenging each other or concurring with each other is important when we're having these kind of very important public policy debates. What I would say, though, is that we've heard a lot from the landowners and/or citizens who are opposing this, and I appreciate their comments. But we also need to hear from the proponents as well. Because it's like Lois Campbell, she came in here last week and she said, this is serious stuff. And what I told her at the time was, given the severity of the situation, we, before we take any kind of action, we need to hear from both sides or all sides. And so if we were to consider a, any kind of action on this, I do think we owe it to the citizens, as well as just good government, is that we give an opportunity to the proponents to allow them to come in here and answer questions or make comments or statements as well. That's just good government. It's fair and honest, and it allows people the opportunity to, it may actually serve as a public service in the sense of giving landowners and citizens an opportunity to ask the people from the pipeline questions that maybe they feel like they are not getting answers to. And so if we would host that, that would be a service to the public.
Commissioner Aaronz, do we have any data that says how many people have signed up already in favor of it? I mean, the pipeline going through their property? Because I, all I've heard from is the negatives, that people in my district do not want it. It's, it's clear and simple, obviously, because mine is primarily the agricultural district. So, you know, I, I guess I'd like to know if there are actually some farmers, and how many have signed up, if that data is available somewhere.
I think we can, we can find it. Commissioner Aaronz, I agree with you. The reason why I like this form of discussion, I, I totally agree that vetting this issue in, in, in light of having it a public situation. We've heard before that sometimes that we are not transparent enough. And I thought, well, this is a pretty good idea for commissioners just to have this conversation. I would agree with you, before any action needs to be taken, we need to hear from both sides. We need to have that open discussion, and your idea about having questions and answers probably would be of service to both sides, so they better understand the positions. And, you know, sometimes you get a lot of misinformation that comes out, or somebody has made a comment and it isn't challenged by any fact. So this idea, before any action on the part of Lincoln County is taken care of, we need to do that. Now, we've heard a lot from the opposition, of course, and the number of emails that we have received are always from concerned citizens. But we, Commissioner Gibbon, we've never heard of anybody from, that sent a message about signing up or they don't have a concern. So that's why this discussion this morning, I thought, would be a positive step in helping us come to some kind of decision whether, whatever that final outcome may be. So, any other comments? I'm, I've accomplished this, so I like the idea, Commissioner Aaronz, of maybe it's a special meeting we have some night or some evening, and we set that date, but that's something we can decide amongst ourselves later on.
No, I would agree. I had multiple people tell me that if we do this, they would like a forum set up during the evening hours so that, you know, you can maximize participation and attendance. And sometime, you know, six-thirty, seven o'clock at night. And I've heard the same thing. So hopefully we can do that here in the near future and get that set up and invite the pipeline folks and/or supporters of the pipeline. And then the general public can attend and, and we'll hold a nice, respectful meeting and maybe we can get down to the bottom of getting these questions answered.
But our options are limited, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because they're really just sending a letter to the PUC, supporting it or not supporting it, and that probably are two options?
Well, and I think, don't forget this point, we have the capability of serving as a forum where people can get answers to their questions. You know, we, we have that ability where we can ask the pipeline proponents to provide answers to these questions ahead of time instead of waiting till February of next year, you know, when the PUC hearings take place. So I think that's a valuable service to the public as well, because if there is, you know, non-factual information floating around out there, the record can be corrected rather fast. I mean, for example, I had somebody call me yesterday who wanted to tell me, talk to me about how they won't be issued liability insurance. And they were telling me that if an accident happens on their property due to the pipeline, they're going to be held liable. And I'm just, you know, I had to tell this person that, well, that's not how South Dakota personal injury law works. You don't just get, you're not just held responsible for an accident on your property because the pipeline goes through. And so there is, there's obviously a lot of talking points being issued by a lot of different interest groups that don't fully comply with, that, that are not cognizant of how South Dakota law works. So let's give everybody an opportunity to come in and set the record straight.
I would agree. And one other thing is that most of your emails have dealt with the safety factor of the pipeline itself and the CO2 being somewhat a major concern to them and what gets released into the air. But, but so much of this really needs to be explained in detail so that you can put to rest some of the concerns or issues that some people add to or subtract from. And I'm not discounting the fact that these people that are sending all these emails to us don't have legitimate concerns, but it seems as though that we're talking about an ability to get answers, and we don't need to repeat that. But Madam Chair, I, we've accomplished what I had hoped we would do, and I will help you to join our commissioners in setting a date in an evening time when we can have that full discussion for the proponents and opponents.
I guess my three colleagues here, your districts all, I guess, go up against our county to the north, I guess, what, what is their feeling on some of this or what has their action been so far? I'm just curious because this is going to go through a very populated area.
I've talked with, with Carol Muller, who is their administrator, and they're doing about the same thing that we are. They're evaluating that. They're mulling over a moratorium. It was the last comment that I was told. So unless you have other things, that's where they sit, Jim.
Madam Chair, that's it.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion on that issue for today? If not, I consider a motion to adjourn.
Move to it, Erin.
Thank you. If I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. For any of you call the roll?
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landy?
Yes. And just to remind everybody, we do have a joint Lincoln County and city of Sioux Falls meeting on May twenty-fourth at seven PM here in our commission room down here in Canton.